Hall of Meeting, back into session. We certainly want to thank the folks at Ag Expo Park for providing us a very nice lunch. Thanks to Kenny Wallace and all of his group. Very, very delicious lunch. And we're back in the session. I'll call the Commission back into session. We're on Resolution Number 7091. Resolution, re-appropriating funds designated for Director of School Search. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills is second. School Board Report, 11 yes, zero no. Education Committee?
Four yes, zero no.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We approved last year $75,000 for the search for a new director. Since we've entered a new budget year, this is moving those funds into the current bud-- what's remaining funds into the current budget year for the purpose of continuing the search.
Any questions of Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. Resolution 7091 is up for consideration. If you're in favor of 7091, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record the vote, please. Commissioner Walton, record the vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted, 24 yes and zero no. Resolution Number 795. Resolution, making appropriations to nonprofit charitable organizations of Williamson County, Tennessee, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2009, and ending June 30, 2010. Commissioner Green, please.
Move for approval.
Second.
Who over here said second? Commissioner Little, Tommy Little. The second. Budget Committee Report?
Budget Committee, four, four, zero against.
Explanation, please. Commissioner Green?
Yes, this is the monies that we set aside for the 501(c)(3)'s. And just as a note of interest, all of these represented a 10% decrease in their funds this year also.
Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, I'm ready. Declare a conflict when I'm voting my conscience. I'm a member of the Board of Directors of J.L. Clay Senior Citizen Center.
Very well. So noted. Record reflected. Commissioner Barnwell is declaring conflict of interest. Any other comments?
I vote my conscience also.
Hold it.
Okay, hold it.
Go ahead. Now tell us.
Thank you. I will also be voting my conscience, but I have conflict of interest on my friend's house, board director.
Okay. Any other conflicts? Thank you very much. We're ready to vote. Resolution 5095. If you're in favor of this resolution, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record vote, please. Ms. Anderson, let me get your--
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution, appropriating $1 million education privilege tax and approving the related operating transfers for 2009-10 rural debt service expenditures. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Move for approval?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Langston. Budget Committee Report? Budget?
Four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner--
Education Committee? Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, this is just the transferring of the education privilege taxes collected into the rural debt service for principal bond bonds.
Questions of Commissioner Barnwell? I see none. 7096 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Commissioner Walton?
Jack, thank you.
Record vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimous, we adopted 24 yes, zero no. Resolution 7097. Resolution, appropriating and amending the 2009-10 capital projects budget by $250,000 and approving the related operating transfers. Revenues to come from county general undesignated fund balance. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second. Budget Committee Report?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please, sir?
Yes, Budget Committee, on this thing, found it was appropriate to replace the HBAC at the Criminal Justice Center, and the funds are available to do that, so we thought we'd move ahead and do it, get it taken care of.
Any questions of Commissioner Green? See none. 7097. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you. Twenty-four yes and zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number 7089. Resolution requesting approval of $5,510,140 for the Williamson County Board of Education 2009-10 capital needs with $3,252,268.66 as an intent to fund and $2,257,871.34 being paid from the Rural and General Debt Service Funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval?
Commissioner Tommy Little, the second. School Board Report, 12 yes, zero no. Education?
Five yes, zero no.
Thank you. Budget?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Yes, this was the capital budget as approved in the Budget Committees and the Education Committee. This is in the resolution form, so we can get it through the system. What you'll see is that it's $5,505,000, but there's been some returns to rural debt service and general debt service from previous projects, so we're only going to have to intend to fund a little over $3 million of this amount. And for the Education Committee, we approved this resolution as an amendment, and since it hadn't been filed at that point in time, I just signed this resolution and filed this one.
Chair Rick, go ahead.
We just approved this as an amendment, but I just was advised that this should be its own resolution.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Commissioner Para.
Just a quick question. Where it says replace GX150, is that the computer model number? It's just computers? Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions? See none. 7098 is up for consideration. Total of $5,510,140. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. 7099. A resolution authorizing the issuance of an interest-bearing education projects one-year capital outlay note, Series 2009, of Williamson County, Tennessee, and the principal amount not to exceed $3,252,270, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said note, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of tax for the payment of principal thereof and interest thereon. Commissioner Barnwell, please.
Move for approval?
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Budget Committee Report?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Education Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, please. Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, this is the authorization to borrow the money from our intent to fund we just passed in the last resolution.
Any questions of Commissioner Barnwell on 099? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Commissioner Brockman? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you very much. Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 70910. A resolution of a governing body of Williamson County, Tennessee, authorizing the issuance, sale, and payment of interest-bearing 2009-10 general purpose school fund tax anticipation notes not to exceed $25 million.
Move for approval?
Commissioner Barnwell? Commissioner Tommy Little, the second. Budget Committee Report?
Budget Committee, five, four, zero against.
Education Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Explanation, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is the annual borrowing we do. The property taxes don't come until later in the year, and the school system needs some cash to pay their operating expenses for the first several months of the school year. This is the-- I'm fairly certain we borrow it from ourselves, don't we, Mr. Mayor?
Any questions of Commissioner Barnwell on 70910? I see none. If you're in favor of 70910, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wish to vote? Commissioner Wilson, record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted, 24 yes, zero no. Resolution 70911. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 library budget by $10,000 for the purchase of computer equipment and software. Revenues to come from various state grant funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Barnwell, the second. Library Board of Trustees?
Six, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green, please.
The Williamson County Public Library has replied for and received two grants to this amount of $10,000 from the Tennessee State Library and Archives. This is to establish training centers, job training centers, in the public libraries and to fund computer equipment. And that's what this money is going to be used for, as it's designated in the expenditures.
Questions of Commissioner Green on 70911? See no questions. If you're in favor of 70911, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 70912. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 rest of deeds budget by $85,120. Revenues to come from document recording fees. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Wilson, the second. Budget Committee Report?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is monies that's collected for legal fees produced by the Register's Office, and they're going to utilize this money as it's laid out in expenditures there for part-time pay, lease payments, lease payments, maintenance and repairs to office equipment and capital outlay to data processing equipment.
Questions of Commissioner Green? See none?
It's a lot of legal fees.
70912 is for your consideration. Commissioner Green? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted, 24 yes and zero no. Resolution 70913. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 capital projects budget by $407,216 for home grant funds. Revenues to come from state of Tennessee. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee Report?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir. Explanation, please.
Williamson County recently received a grant for $407,216 through the State Tennessee Home Program. This is for qualified residents who make home repairs and assistance in constructing new residences. And as you know, Third Ware has the Greater Nashville Regional Council. Will provide administrative services prior to the, relative to the provision of these grants, and will also, in the next resolution, authorize the mayor to enter into this agreement.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Green on Number 13? I see none. 70913 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Unanimously adopted, 24 yes, zero no. Resolution Number 70914. Resolution authorizing the county mayor to enter into contractual agreement for administration services with the Greater Nashville Regional Council in connection with the THDA home grant. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee Report?
Budget Committee, five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please.
The Williamson County and the Greater Nashville Region, the GNRC, this is for the mayor to enter into a contractual agreement with the, them to administer the services relative to this grant and determine and process those requests that come in. And the contract to do that's $26,640, which is really part of the grant.
Questions of Commissioner Green? Thank you, sir. 70914 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution Number 14 unanimously adopted. Resolution Number 70915. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 highway department budget by $100,000 and related operating transfers for paving expenses. Revenues to come from highway privilege tax funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Cook, the second. Highway Commission voted four, four, zero against. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green, please.
The Highway Department put together a list of projects that needed to be repaved, and based on that list, we determined it's going to take $100,000 to pave those projects that they put together.
Thank you, sir.
Coming from privilege tax.
Questions of Commissioner Green? I see none. 70915. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2009-10 emergency communications budget by Revenues to come from state grant funds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Who was the second? Commissioner Wilson, the second. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee. Commissioner Hancock?
Seven in favor, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is moving monies. It says the Williamson County Emergency Communications Platform received grants in the 2008-2009 fiscal year for the interoperable communications plan and related training funds. What we're trying to do is move those existing funds that were not utilized in 2008 and 2009 into this next budget cycle.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, if you would, on the actual resolution itself, the amount under revenues, make that period after the zero comma, $190,000, sort of a period, please.
Got you.
Just make that typographical correction. All in favor, if you're in favor, 70916, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted, 24 yes, zero no. Resolution establishing the 2009-10 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, Grant Number One, for the Sheriff's Department totaling $32,063. Revenues to come from grant funds. Commissioner Davis, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee?
Seven in favor, zero against.
Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Davis, please.
These are various grants from federal money that the Sheriff's Department applied for and received, and we use for computers and related hardware and software. Any other explanation, I defer to the Law Enforcement Committee.
Any questions relative to 70919? I see none. If you're in favor of 70919, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. Late file resolution, 70922. Resolution establishing the 2009-10 American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, Grant Number Two, the Sheriff's Department totaling $164,075. Revenues to come from grant funds. Commissioner Williams, please.
That's true. The revenue is supposed to come from grant funds. It's supposed to be for two years. It's our understanding from the meeting that this is not a continuing job. They'll be transferred somewhere else within the department.
Any questions on 7922?
I'll get it on the floor.
Is there a motion, the second? Commissioner Williams made a motion. He made the second. Commissioner Hayes, the second. Law Enforcement, Public Safety Committee?
Seven, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you, sir.
No, we didn't meet.
Okay.
Okay.
You didn't meet.
I'm sitting here, this is new to me. I'm thinking, I haven't seen this before.
All right. This is, as Commissioner Williams reported, this is for the grant fees, things, positions that are here, and it was reported, as Commissioner Williams reported, this is funded by the R.R. funds, and as I understand it, Commissioner Williams was reporting to the committee that if these folks that are hired will know that it's a two-year grant, and if it goes away, they go away.
That's what, that's, or transferred somewhere else into the department.
They go away. So, Madam Clerk, we could make sure that that's a part of this recommendation and this resolution, understanding that this is a two-year commitment on the part of these funds. Any other questions on 70922? In favor of 70922, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Commissioner Walton, please. Record a vote, please.
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes and zero no approving that late file resolution. Okay. Resolution to support action by the State of Tennessee to name a bridge located in state, on a state road in Williamson County after and in honor of Sergeant Timothy H. Walker. Commissioners Greer, Jones, Brockman, and Williams?
Please for approval.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Greer, to get this on the floor. Highway Commission approve this, five, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioners Jones and Greer, I know you, this started with you guys.
Well, I had the privilege of teaching Tim at Fairview High School. He was a great student athlete, and he was a great young man. Originally, we had planned on naming a bridge for Tim on Coldwater Road. We found out when we went through the process that since it crossed 840, all roads that cross 840 or have anything to do with 840 have to be named for Tennessee National Guardsmen. And so the state said we couldn't do that. The state, though, did find a road, and I appreciate Commissioners Brockman and Williams. It's going to be on Highway 96 West, and there's a bridge that doesn't cross 840. It crosses the Harpeth River.
West Harpeth.
West Harpeth. And the state has agreed to name that bridge in honor of Tim Walker, who gave his life for our country, and I appreciate you supporting this resolution.
Commissioner Williams?
I'd like to make an offer of amendment to it. First part, I want to make sure that his rank gets that along with his name on the side, on the sign. And then underneath his name, rank, and name, I'd like to put the words Iraq, because I think that showing that he died in Iraq says a lot.
Second.
We can submit to the state? I would assume we can ask the state to do that. I don't know, do they? Mayor Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Let us try that. They've got some pretty strict rules of how those signs are made, how they, the wordage on those signs go. If we can do it, would you give the flexibility to do it? If we can't, we'll have to go to the standard. Because I'm sure every funding, every organization from Bristol to Memphis has got special wording they'd like to put on them, but I think there's a template they have to go with, but we will try that if that's okay.
Then my amendment would be put Iraq on there if the state would allow it.
And who's second in that? Commissioner Barnwell, seconded to amend this resolution to, for Sergeant Timothy Walker to show his rank, and also on the bottom, indicate Iraq if the state will allow us to do that. Any problems with that? Let's vote that amendment. Do you have a comment on the amendment, Commissioner Hayes?
Not necessarily on the name other than the fact that the state does give it a requirement, because I know with Mr. Smithsons, we had to adhere to what they told us we could put on.
I think with the amendment, we're merely asking the state to consider doing that. If they don't, then that's fine, because, you know, they always do what we ask them to do, right? Commissioner Hayes?
Other thing, Mr. Chairman, there is a cost involved unless the state has agreed to pay.
No, there isn't, since he gave his life for the country. We checked on that. There's no cost. There's no cost to the county at all.
Good. I was going to make the amendment for us to zoom the cost. Because with Mr. Smithson, we did have to.
And I guess, just to make sure that everything's appro-- this is also, is this not in Commissioner Hancock and Hester's district? On Highway 96 West?
No.
It's both, we're on one side, they're on the other.
Okay. I'm sorry.
So, I would assume that Commissioners Hester and Hancock would be glad to offer their support toward this. So, I guess that is a fact, that one side of the river is two, and the other side is your guys, so. But anyway, that's what we'll do. Anything further before we vote the amendment? You got the amendment loaded?
I just have one comment, not on the amendment.
Any other questions, comments on the amendment? Let's vote the amendment. Amendment's loaded on the machine. If you're in favor of the amendment, asking to add the rank in Iraq if the state allows? All those, record a vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no on the amendment. So, we're voting on the original resolution as amended.
I just want to make a statement. I just wanted to remark that I was honored to be asked for this, and it's important for us to recognize Sergeant Walker's contributions. It's a beautiful bridge, too, because you look to your right or your left and see the West Harpeth, and there's a sign indicating that it is the West Harpeth River, and this bridge will honor him, and so it's very, very happy to have his name associated with this beautiful vista over the West Harpeth.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw? Commissioner Chalfont, please.
Very quick question. What was his, a sergeant could be any of four or five different grades. It just seems to be, it needs to be accurately displayed, whether he was sergeant, sergeant first class, master sergeant, whatever.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, if you could find that out, we'll make sure that that's appropriately done, and I know that they usually do, but once this is adopted and approved, and they get ready to dedicate it, we're needing to make sure that we're all notified of that and be there for the dedication. Thank you, Commissioner Chalfont. Anything else on seven oh nine eighteen as amended? If you're in favor of this resolution as amended, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. Unanimously adopted, resolution eighteen. Resolution number seven oh nine twenty, and if you would, make these notes in the header. Resolution to reappoint Casey Ashworth as Judicial Commissioner for Williamson County, and then down in the body, be it therefore resolved and is hereby reappointed as Judicial Commissioner. If you'll make those notes, it'll be appropriate, seven oh nine twenty, resolution to reappoint Casey Ashworth as Judicial Commissioner for Williamson County. Commissioner Davis, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Chalfont, the second. Law Enforcement Committee report, please, Ms. Hancock.
Seven five zero against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Four zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, please. Commissioner Davis?
I think you already covered it. This is an existing position, same person serving in the position, so it's simply a reappointment.
Any questions? Seven oh nine twenty. If you're in favor of that resolution, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button? Record a vote, please, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty-three yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Twenty-three yes and zero no. Resolution number seven oh nine twenty-one. A resolution to establish a lower speed, school speed limit zone on South Hall Road to accommodate a school to be located at the Grace Chapel Church. Commissioner Hancock and Hester?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. The Highway Commission voted four, four, zero against. Explanation, Commissioners Hancock and Hester, please.
This is a new church school that's being started in, it's just to create a school zone for that area. We, I'm very much supportive, and I think that's it is also.
Any questions? Seven oh nine twenty-one. Commissioner Walton, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking on the last page of this, it's talking about a flashing sign. Is that school paying for that, or are we paying for that?
That I don't know.
My understanding is that the school is paying for that.
Okay.
Say it correctly, Ms. Horn. School is paying for the flashing light. Other questions of seven on seven oh nine twenty-one? I see none. If you're in favor of seven oh nine twenty-one, press your yes button. Opposed, you know button? Everybody vote, wish to vote? Record a vote, please.
Twenty-three yes.
Twenty-three yes, zero no. Resolution is adopted. Is there anything else to come before this meeting of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Hayes, please.
Chairman, I appreciate you giving us now to remind everyone about our county fair that will be going on August seventh through the fifteenth. You have some brochures in front of you. If you need others, they're available in the county mayor's office. You also have two free tickets for Government Employer Day. They're worth about six dollars apiece, and that's on Saturday, the last day, August the fifteenth. Hope you'll come out and support. I know many of you, thank you for volunteering, are already volunteering, and we appreciate that, and hopefully the weather will be good to us, and we'll have a wonderful fair. So, thank you for your support. See you at the fair.
Anything further? Over lunch, we did have a conversation with Representative Sergeant, and as soon as we get things leveled off, we'll be getting with legal counsel to draft the appropriate request to the Attorney General as it relates to that statute. So, we'll do that and get that done, and get that in the hands of Representative Sergeant as soon as we can. Just as you've got notices laid at your desk today, the Human Resources Committee meeting that's scheduled for next Monday has been canceled due to lack of business, and the tax study committee said for this Wednesday, the fifteenth, has been canceled. So, are there any other announcements before we? We'll let you, Commissioner Wilson, you have the floor.
Okay. I would like to personally thank, for all of us, our Commissioner Cook furnishing our wonderful refreshments that we had this morning. Thank you so much. She's so good to share her talents with us.
Anything else? There are no further comments, so we'll adjourn. We will entertain a motion to adjourn. We don't meet in August, we'll be back the second Monday in September, so entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, we're out of here. Thank you very much.